But that clown for y'all, that damn chief of police to try to put me out for nothing to have me walk out? They try to get me out for what? For what? This is the type of stuff that we dealing with. Black people didn't sacrifice for us to get leadership and act like this. You didn't go through years of Jim Crow segregation for us to get into this political position and treat other black people like this? This is what we dealing with this terrible administration to try to put me out. I'm struggling with my left leg with my MS, but I'm here. This has to stop. This has to stop. We got a clean house. We gotta vote all of them out. All of them out. Stan Brown, Andrew Holmes don't say nothing. Nothing. Y'all sit up there quiet. What do they have on you? Y'all have no freedom of speech? Do you have any nuts? Anything? I'm sad. I'm sick and tired of them to hear them try to put me out. They try to, to try to like, hey, let me talk to you outside. And I respect the cops, the rank and file soldiers who helped me, who said, no, you ain't gonna do this. But this, how much money has Chief Lacy cost his village? How much money? How many lawsuits?
Let him talk.
How many bad things? How many bad things has this chief done? And the fact that she got him to teach the top cop, the top cop. This has to change residents. It's gonna change the unity of the, of the people of Dalton. That's how we change this. We gotta vote her out. Period. If you don't know your block, if you know your neighbors, come to the Dalton trustees YouTube page. Come to the tea with the trustees. That's how we change this. It's a, it's, it's a mess. I can't believe this man tried to put me out. He tried to, she tried to do, he tried to joke and try to cook me. I tried to shake his hand. No, he didn't want to shake my hand. You should be ashamed of yourself, Lacy. You should be ashamed of yourself. That's all I wanna say.
Quiet, please.
Alright. Alright, that ends public comment. Next on the agenda is general announcement. Uh, do anyone have any announcements?
I'd be recognized.
Go ahead.
Um, I have a few announcements um for community events. Uh, the Rural Estates Assistant Living is having back in time senior prom. Uh, it is June fourteenth. It's free admission. And it's located at fifteen fifteen east one hundred and fifty fourth street. That's the old Dorchester. Um, they have a few sponsors. Uh, Senator Napoleon Harris, the Dalton Park District, Fifth Third Bank, Noble Entertainment. And uh, if anybody is interested, I have a flyer and they also have a R S D P number. It is a theme for the roaring twenties and this is at the Rural Estates. Also, the children are out of school, so if anyone has children, they have some programs that's going on throughout the community. Uh, the Dalton Park District has summer camp that starts June tenth through August sixteenth. And that's a Monday through Friday. So if anyone has children, they also have discounts for multiple children. And they have an apprentice program which is for uh children ages twelve and up. June eighth and June fifteenth starting at two P M. At the Dalton Park District, seven fifteen Engel, um Engel Street. And then this program will also lead them to do uh an extended uh apprenticeship program throughout the summer. This is just some information just to get the kids involved. We know that they're out of school. They're not doing anything sitting in house playing on the games probably. But um, that's just some information. The apprenticeship program is free of charge. There's no charge. So um, it's students that do stuff like uh get carpentry skills, plumbing skills, auto mechanic skills and construction skills. So I think that's um really good for them to keep their minds busy. And the last thing is the Dalton Park District is having a all cancer awareness walk. And this is on August thirty first, so it's still a little time. Um, but those people that have survived cancer or is battling with cancer, it's a all cancer awareness walk. Saturday, August thirty first at the Dalton Park District. So we'll be um saying this again when it gets closer to time. I release.
Alright, anyone else? Sure, can I be recognized?
Alright. Good evening, everyone. Also for the park district, we have wind down Wednesdays. And the next event is June the twelfth. Uh, where you can come out to the park is for the East Pavilion, four P M. To eight P M. And they have a live band. That's an awesome band. Sold to the bone. They also have food vendors, food trucks, and also resource vendors there. So if anyone is interested, please call the Dalton Park District, seven zero eight, eight four one, two one, one, one. And that is Wednesday, June the twelfth. Also, adult coed league for softball. Twelve hundred dollars per team, one hundred dollars per person. And that begins June the second, six P M. On Wednesdays and three P M. On Sundays, if you are interested. And that's for the east and west softball field. Also, last but not least, tea with the trustees every second Saturday. Please come out, fellowship with us, uh network with us, get some awesome information. Get some questions answered that you can't get answered on the board meeting. Um, that is every second Saturday. The next one is June eighth, nine thirty A M. One forty seven hundred Evers. I expect to see everyone in this room this coming Saturday. Thank you.
Alright, anyone else?
Yes, mayor.
Go ahead.
Um, hello, everyone. Happy Monday. Um, I would like to invite everyone to the Dalton Park District Roaring Twenties, a speakeasy fundraiser event. I went last year and I had a great time. Um, it's at the Less Alone Fieldhouse, June twenty eighth, seven P M. To eleven P M. Uh, one four seven hundred Evers Street in Dalton, well, in our very favorite village, right? The general mission is a hundred and fifty dollars a ticket and you can feel free to contact Dalton Park with any questions. And uh, seven zero eight, eight four one, two one, one, one. I also have uh another Dalton Park event for our pre-June twelfth food festival, basketball tournament. Saturday, June fifteenth, um right there in Needles Park, one hundred and forty second at Woodline. Uh, mission is free, so everyone please uh join us in Dalton Park, one P M. Until six P M. I also would like to thank um all the families who participated in our family white socks, um skate, white socks tonight. And I'd like to thank the White Sox for the tickets also. All Dalton residents are invited to my third annual family skating night at Linwood Skating Rink. At twenty thirty Glenwood Diet Road in Linwood from five thirty to eight thirty. Due to the support from all around the rural, I made this one a little different. So if anyone have skated with us before, uh we typically fellowship and have a good time. But this one with all the support from the different states, we have shirts that have the all around the rural logo. So that people from different states who support us can join the movement and skate with us. So if you'd like to participate, uh feel free to contact me at seven zero eight, nine six eight, or two nine seven. Or feel free to email me at uh B Norwood at village Dalton dot org. Thank you. And feel free to uh visit our YouTube Dalton Trustees page for any updates and events. Thanks, guys.
Alright, anyone else?
Uh, yes, mayor, I could be recognized.
Go ahead.
Okay, on Saturday, June fifteenth, we will be at uh the Dalton Trustees in partnership with the Father's Day Committee. We'll have our second annual Father's Day barbecue. Uh, this will be at the Dalton Park District in the East Pavilion. This is a free event. Uh, we had a wonderful time last year. Bring, bring your chairs to get comfortable. Food, food and refreshments will be provided. From two P M. To dusk, so it's a primarily all day event. Uh, great DJ, great times and great to fellowship. So we would just love to see everybody come out. Again, Saturday, June fifteenth, two P M. To dusk. Thank you.
Anyone else? Go ahead.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Uh, I'd just like to say uh the Thorn Township Senior Law Program is up and running. Um, school is out now. Uh, we have solicited to T F North, T F South, Thorn Ridge High School, Thorn, Thornwood. So the students are here, uh feel much better now that they're out of school. And uh, any, any, any individual that's from sixteen to twenty-four years old, come on out and help model law for our seniors over the age of sixty. It's a senior uh youth program where uh youth connects with seniors and seniors connect with youth. So it's a blessing that uh the youth have came out. They're coming to Jules now. Uh, you can go online to W W W dot Thorn Township dot uh com, jobs, sixteen to twenty-four. Also, you can come to the office at one sixty-nine ten Westview, South Holland, Illinois. Contact number is seven oh eight, five nine six, six zero four zero, extension four zero zero seven, or either four zero zero eight. Thank you.
Alright, anyone else? Alright, next on the agenda is mayor's report. So um, as you guys know, I really, really love my city. I grew up here in the village of Dalton and I don't want to do nothing but see um the best things for my village. It saddens me that every time it's um disagreement amongst anyone here, uh we call media. Um, it also saddens me that the media only come out for a mess. I get it. Y'all using me for clickbait and ratings. Um, I wish you guys would come out for the good we do in our community. There's tons of events that I post, um that I advocate for and that I showcase. Um, cause y'all literally go on my Facebook page, my Instagram page, uh my Tiffany on the Move podcast page. And you take my clips and use it to bring people into your station. Um, I think now you guys owe me a check news, uh because you use my likeness and my name just for views. Um, please, please um showcase the good in our village, cause you're putting a black eye on our community. Um, you're putting people, guys, you're out of order.
One more disruption, I am clearing the room.
Yes, he will. So just like you guys was quiet and I was quiet when everybody spoke, y'all give me the same respect to be heard. Just cause some people may not like what I'm saying, don't mean others don't like what I'm saying. So a lot of people that support super mayor, believe it or not. And I just need them to hear another narrative and not just the false negative narrative that's put out there by the Board of Trustees, the four, and also the media. And then the hate groups and what you don't understand, fellow relax. It's people that live in our community that is being affected by the nonsense, the negativity. Um, the people are getting threats uh from our staff to regular residents. And you don't understand the chaos that you created by just wanting to showboat or want five minutes of fame on the news. Shame on you. You and God have to deal with that later on in life. But anyway, as I was stating, um I really, really want you guys to see what Dalton could be, what Dalton should have been a long time ago. People put out their narratives and yes, we're going to entertain a lot of it as relates to the facts. Cause you guys aren't following fiction, a made up story. It is a smear campaign going on right now. People are using different people for political gain and it's sad. But I don't want anybody that's young like me to be discouraged. Run for office. Public office is something that's needed and something that the youth need to take a stance and do. Do not be discouraged. I want you to continue to run, cause I want you to see what it looks like when you go through controversy. But when you come out on the other end and you victorious, cause when it does clear and it will clear, you're gonna see the facts and what it really was. But not what they was telling you, which was lies. Uh, everybody should know that media is uh deception. Uh, people sell you what they want you to believe at that moment. Um, I got clips and all kinds of stuff people send me, believe it or not. I'm making a video for you so you can see what I mean about the news. Um, it's a ton of things going on in the world. We should really be focusing on that and band it together. I'm about unity. That's why you see me always positive, head held high and always walking in my purpose. Um, God gave me the opportunity to be the first, but unfortunately, when you're the first, you get the worst. You get all the negatives. You get all the things that people think you should do, but what you are doing is what get overshadowed. Um, as relates to... Grants. I'll start with the grants first. As relates to the grants. Um, we have produced so many different things here. Um, I know we put the six million dollars in the budget. I know the board tried to take it out. You cannot get money once you take things out of budget. You have to basically plan for the money. Uh, D C E O grant, uh we're getting one million dollars. I don't know if you heard about that. Of course not, cause news and display that. That will be here by June thirtieth. It's for one million dollars for operating expenses. Again, these are things that we do here, meaning myself and my administration, but it don't get no type of play. And that's one million dollars. Also, D C E O grant, another one for a hundred and twelve thousand dollars. It's for capital improvements. That's for projects, things that you would like to do. Sometimes when you see us developing or doing things in our community, we have crap money to do it, but no one educates the public on the how. You guys just see it being produced and don't understand how we're doing it. So this is me telling you how we're doing it. Um, also, this is on the agenda for this evening, the I E P A is for two point seven million dollars. It's the lead service line replacement. Um, everybody complaining about things as relates to water and issues that we had in our town forever. Those are the things that I have been entertaining and fixing and putting a plan before the board so that we can vote on these items. Um, also, you guys know that our water tank had exploded uh when we had that storm. We are also um in need of finding revenue to pay for that, and that is a major project. Um, we also need to continue doing our streets, um our sidewalks and our alleys. Those are things that wasn't done and you guys know this, cause if you've been here as long as me, you had to pay fifty percent just for a sidewalk that you would never own. Uh, where they do that at? So if the sidewalk was five thousand dollars, you had to pay twenty-five hundred and the village paid twenty-five hundred. Under my administration, we don't charge you anything as it should have been from day one. It is free. If you call and let us know that it is cracked, um broken, messed up, we will put it on the list. We will get to it. Done a ton of sidewalks last year. We will do more sidewalks this year and the same with street resurfacing. But while we're doing street resurfacing, we are fixing the sewers as well. Because we have a lot of flood issues in our community that we are fixing. So again, stop with the mess and pay attention to the things that really matter to community. Cause when it hits our city, you wanna care that these things are in place. But if you so blinded by the person throwing a rock high in their hand with the mess and chaos, you will never see what's really being fixed in your community. Um, next, June fifteenth, uh Father's Day, we're gonna have our backyard barbecue. Uh, it will be at Just Ice Rink. That address is one four three twelve Greenwood. Please come out and join us. I know that we had posted it uh two different times. Unfortunately, it rained, so we had to cancel it. So we will be doing it again. Um, I'm praying for great weather. Um, it's a way that we bring community together and we unify. Um, one thing that I love about that day is we're celebrating the fathers, but at the same time, we're gonna allow people to skate. Uh, we're working on getting someone to manage to skate rink so that it will be open always. And in doing so, it will be open on certain days. Monday through Thursday will be open. And then Friday, Saturday, Sunday, it will be available for rental. This is a way we'll bring revenue to our village. So these are things we're working on. It's me letting you know what our plans are. July third, July third is the Fourth of July Parade and Firework Show. Again, since I became your mayor, I brought back a parade that has been uh dormant for over a decade. And for those that don't know, that's over ten years. It was really epic last year. We started right here from Village Hall and we worked our way all the way down Greenwood, which is now Greenwood Falls. Um, we went all the way to the school that I graduated from, Thorn Ridge High School on um Cottage Grove. We will be doing the same thing this very year. If you are interested or want to sign up, please sign up with Ms. Medina. Um, if you wanna be in a parade or you got a fire engine, which most municipalities do, come and join the movement with us. Please join us for those things. Excuse me. Okay, so now, please don't be disrespectful. Now, um, I wanna go over the videos and things that we have just done. Uh, one thing that we've done is Cop on Top. Um, Cop on Top was really, really epic. It was really epic for us. Uh, when I say epic, we did great things. We was able to raise funds. Um, this is something that they do every single year and Cop on Top had people come from all over to support and donate. Um, this was on our Facebook and it is also on our website. Um, can you please play the video? Future all twice, the things that we have had a huge attack. Cause the youth, he wanted to be a police officer, so it was cool for him to meet them, talk to them about what it is. Congratulations. Y'all give it up. Good job. Um, next, we have our Showtime at Apollo. Showtime at Apollo was at the rink. It was one forty-three twelve Greenwood. That was really epic. We had people from all over through a township come up and uh show up and show out. They had voices, which was unbelievable. Uh, and then they had kids that did dynamite. Um, you can play the video so people can see what that looks like. And then by the way, we will be doing this uh once a month as well. So if you wanna... Again, an outdoor skating rink slash ice rink. You told me it's a ice in the winter and people can ice skate. In the summer, they roll estate. That's Trish. He's actually a professional singer and have a band. One of our residents. All these uh enjoying residents. Okay, he's one of our residents. As you can see, it was really, really nice. People enjoyed their stuff, had a good time. Weather was great. And you can't never end without doing your lecture slide. Those ladies love to do the five. Yes, that's couldn't stop the kids. We barbecue for them. I think that was a meter hustle, right? For Showtime at Apollo, we even uh hear the law. He's one of our rappers, sort of down, fashion. Again, if you're interested in joining us, we'll be there for a month, for two or three hours.
Tina Marie? Miss Anita Baker?
That's the mother!
Everybody a winner. Alright!
After the holiday.
Okay, so this is Showtime at the Apollo. Um, before we start the tax levy, I would like to say two things as it relates to clerk. I am still in need of all village ordinances, which I still do not have. Uh, I am entitled to look at any ordinance that we have on the books and I still don't have that myself or administration. So we're still looking for that from you as relates to a copy. We don't need the original. We just would like a copy. Um, next, Woodline and Greenwood, uh we will be uh converting it to a dead end. We're working on the particulars for that, so stay tuned. Uh, those that do live in our community, when you go down Woodline, it will be closed off. We're gonna put notices out throughout the week so people can be aware of that. And then also, we're gonna put reflectors there so no one runs into anything. Because on Greenwood, people do that sharp left or sharp right, it will be cut off. So just reminding you of that. Um, the next video is the Dalton Tax Levy and this talks about your property taxes. This is one question that's always asked of me as it relates to our taxes uh being increased here in our village. Uh, just so you know, uh for those that don't understand how it works, uh the Board of Trustees are the ones that raises property taxes. We have made a tax levy. It comes up for a vote and each year they raise your property taxes. So when people get to attack and say, mayor is you, it's not the mayor. It is the Board of Trustees. You should for you. It's called Freedom of Information Act and you can get exactly what you wanna see here on the T V. It will tell you who voted yes, who voted no. It will tell you the truth instead of what people just feeding to you to get you to not like someone or think someone's doing something against their village. Uh, I understand that it's hard out here for everybody, that people need to uh work on delivering the message the correct way. So here's your truth. Can you please play the video?
First of all, as far as we expect, tax levy, every year we must levy taxes. For our village, for our village. We levy taxes, we get money, get twenty lines of day to day operations, our cheese, our fire, our, um, our worms. All of those, those departments are levying our taxes. So if we do not levy taxes, we will not receive the money to do the day to day operations of the citizens. Um, in no way, shape, form have I ever advocated to increase property taxes. As you know, as a trustee myself, I've always tried to decrease taxes. Or if it's warranted, yes, you have to levy uh for taxes. But in this case, if you don't know, now you will know today, every community passes a tax levy of four point nine nine percent. No matter what the public says, because that's the levy that they can pass. If it's under five percent, you can pass it without going out into the public. When it goes above five percent, you must go to the public and let your guys know that. So if you go and you could for you anything like standing up here, you could for you any other town, Apollo, Kansas City, Ripdale, Lansing, any town. You'll see that they do the same thing. So that's what I was showing today. I'm giving you the fact. So I'm gonna take me down memory lane by going to twenty seventeen. Can you play the tape? So twenty seventeen, uh we was at six, six million dollars, right? For that being of taxes. If you look and read on that page right here, they increase your property taxes by fourteen percent. This is what you don't know, resident. Fourteen percent. So if you read and go a little farther and you'll see who voted to actually increase your property taxes. On here, you'll see trustee Haps voted to increase your property taxes. And you will see ex-trustee Stubbs voted to increase your property taxes. But I wanted to give you the ordinance and you can understand who voted to increase your taxes. So when you're getting information, you will have facts to go back. Then we'll go to twenty eighteen, twenty eighteen. They levy um nine million dollars.
Every year they raise your taxes.
And here, if you look, same thing, taxes, uh trustees raise your taxes by fourteen percent again. And that was again trustee House and trustee Stubbs. Of course, the rest of them voted as well. Trustee Mohammed, trustee Pearson, all of them voted. But I'm just out, cause these are because on your board now, that's trying to do spin cycle to tell you the opposite. So for years, they've been raising your taxes to twenty eighteen. Now let's move on. Twenty nineteen, twenty nineteen, trying to do the same thing. But this time, this is when um everybody voted for it. So this is uh ten million dollars, twenty nineteen. Trustee Brown, uh not Brown, Stan Brown, trustee Tammy Brown voted for this. Trustee Holmes, trustee House, trustee Steves. Everybody voted for this, but it stayed the same. On May twenty twenty, same here, it stayed the exact same, zero percent. They'll score ten million dollars. Then you go and you're gonna read to who voted for in the lineup. Trustee Tammy Brown, trustee Haps, and then trustee A S Steves.
Mayor Hanger.
May of twenty twenty-one, um tax levy for ten million dollars. On here, it says again, zero percent.
And further than that, regards, this is the tax levy. You can get it and you can see what it is.
What I wrote up there to raise your taxes, which is trustees A S Steves, trustee Nolan, trustee Melchior, trustee Tammy Brown, trustee House. Everybody voted to raise your taxes twenty-one. Now I give you copies of everything. Now that way you can go on the reading.
Trustee Belcher's on there too, raising your property taxes. Trustee Norwood, trustee A S Steves. Everybody. Everybody. So every... So every single...